I'll call the meeting of the city town Atherton Council to order at six o'clock on April seventeenth, twenty twenty four. And, uh, let's see, our regular meeting, we have remote participation by our mayor today. And I'm filling in for her. So we have the, it's the teleconference notice pursuant to government code, section five, four, nine, five, three subdivision B. The following city council meeting includes teleconference participation by council member Diana Hawkins-Manuelian, and she's at the Hyatt Regency in Sacramento, twelve oh nine L Street, Sacramento. She's at the um, leadership um, league leadership um, conference this week. So um, we're going to call the order and then stand up and do the pledge allegiance. Yeah.
You didn't call the order.
We're going to call, roll call next. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we just stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. So.
Can read it.
Yes.
I have trouble.
So I'll have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Holland.
Here.
Councilmember DeGoya.
Yes.
Councilmember Widmer.
Yep.
Vice Mayor.
Here.
And Mayor Hawkins.
Here.
Thank you. I'll remind you, if we have any votes, we'll do a roll call this evening.
Okay, so we have a number of um, presentations, some proclamations. The first one I will read, uh, and it is uh, my great pleasure for National Peace Officers Memorial Day Proclamation. And if you uh, the, the, I have this here. And uh, on our little desk, thank you very much, Chief, for the little uh, label pen. It's beautiful. It's a rose with um, uh, on top of a blue shield, and it's for National um, Law Enforcement and Officers Memorial. Thank you very much. So it says, "In recognition of National Peace Officers Memorial Day and National Police Week of May twelfth to May eighteenth, twenty twenty four, whereas in nineteen sixty-two, President Kennedy proclaimed May fifteenth as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, the calendar week in which May fifteenth falls is recognized as National Police Week. And whereas, the candlelight vigil for California will be held on May fifth, twenty twenty four. The National Peace Officers Memorial Day service is hosted by the Fraternal Order of Police and the Fraternal Order of Police Auxiliary on May thirteenth, twenty twenty four. And whereas, the town council and the community of the town of Atherton would like to honor the men and women of law enforcement for their never-ending commitment to the protection of life and property. And whereas, the town council would like to honor those four fallen officers in California who lost their lives in the line of duty in twenty twenty-three. That would be Deputy Darnell Calhoun, Officer Gonzalo Carrasco Junior, Deputy Ryan Klinkom Boomer, Officer Tuan Lee, and four from the past also honored, Officer Philip T. Sudario, Sergeant Patricia Gillian, Sergeant Anthony White, Detective Donald A. Mason. And now therefore, um, as the alternate mayor of the town of Atherton, and on behalf of the Atherton Town Council, um, I hereby proclaim that the week of May twelfth, twenty twenty-four be recognized as National Police Week and remember those officers who paid the ultimate sacrifice with their lives while servicing and protecting the citizens of this great state of California. And in witness whereof, the mayor Diana Hawkins-Manuelian, mayor, has set her hand and caused the seal of the town of Atherton to be affixed this seventeenth day of April, twenty twenty-four. And Chief, uh, is that your proclamation up there, your plaque? There you go.
Thank you for that recognition. Your lapel pins came from the office of the uh, Police Officers Memorial in Washington DC, and our officers will be wearing those during the month of May. And on May fifteenth, we will be hosting another copy of the cop in recognition of that day at Mademoiselle Colette's,
Yay.
like we did back in October, and we hope to see the same turnout or more.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Great.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Chief. Um, we have a second proclamation that I'm going to ask Mr. Widmer, Councilmember Widmer, to read. It's the proclamation to the Menlo College Wrestling Team. And Councilmember Widmer has uh, has a good relationship with Menlo College, and he's uh, been a professor there uh, over the last few years. And we see that we have uh, uh, Stephen Weiner, the head of uh, Menlo College with us.
Why don't you guys come out? First off, this is a great achievement by our local college, and we're all very proud of them. Having been a collegiate wrestler, um, I know how hard it is not only to have your team win, which is, a lot of people think it's just an individual sport, but it's a team sport. Everybody has to perform, and to win a national championship is a feat, but is, and actually a second national championship over the last couple of years is a big thing here. So, the proclamation is as follows. In honor of the Menlo College Wrestling, Women's Wrestling Team, whereas the NAIA Women's National Wrestling National Championship on March ninth, twenty twenty-four in Jamestown, North Dakota, the Menlo College Oaks secured their second NAIA team title. And whereas, fifth-year senior Tavaya Heidelberg-Tolson claimed her first internet uh, individual national championship capping an undefeated twenty-four and zero season. And whereas, President Stephen Weiner noted the incredible hard work and sacrifice and talent that goes into securing a national championship, and he acknowledged the remarkable achievement of the young women at Menlo Pol-, at the Menlo College Team. And whereas, Coach Michael Ayah, his exceptional leadership in guiding the team to victory and earning, uh, he earned the uh, prestigious Cascade Collegiate Conference NWCA and NAIA Coach of the Year Award. Now therefore, as the surrogate for the mayor of Atherton, and on behalf of the city council of Atherton, we do hereby proclaim April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four as a day to celebrate the remarkable and uh, the very hardworking achievements of the Menlo College Oaks and the uh, at the NAIA Women's Wrestling Championships. And let us commend the dedication and talent of teamwork that was necessary to win this. So here you are, who's taking the award? You're also doing the men's team too?
No.
Oh, not anymore?
No.
Okay.
Number three.
I think we should all get there, you know?
Like in the crowd.
Yeah.
Are you in this picture? What should I be doing? I like because I'll be creeping in the back.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. That's really a great achievement. Thank you guys so much. So we have uh, our last proclamation. Oh yes, would you like to say something, please?
Yeah, say.
You gotta turn it around.
Just to express appreciation for the recognition, the credit goes to this man here for his leadership and of the team. Pretty remarkable. First-year coach, Coach of the Year nationally.
Great.
Wow.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Thank you all for the recognition. Appreciate it.
Well, it's great to have you. Done good.
We're glad that you're in our community. Coach, you want to say something?
Yeah, of course.
Thank you. Thank you guys for the recognition. It felt good to bring it back to the bay.
Great.
Yes, awesome.
We're happy to have you here and.
Always next year too, huh? Always next.
Back to back.
Okay, so we have one more proclamation in recognition of Arbor Day, and I'm asking Councilmember DeGoya to uh, read this proclamation for us.
I have it. Okay, this is a proclamation in recognition of Arbor Day. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Alaska Board of Agriculture that a special day be sped aside, set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas, this holiday called Arbor Day was observed with the planting of more than one million trees in Neba-, in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and throughout the world. And whereas, the purpose of the designation of this day is to encourage the planting of shade and forest trees to protect our forests as well as their wildlife. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our extremely precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood, fuel, and countless other wood products. And whereas, trees in Atherton beautify our community, improve our health, and increase our property values. And whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, on behalf of the mayor of the town of Atherton, I do hereby proclaim April twenty-first, twenty twenty-four as Arbor Day in the town of Atherton, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees, and further urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden their hearts, and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Thank you, Councilmember DeGoya. Uh, you know, it's really great to hear this because, and Atherton is a place for lots of trees. And as you remember, we um, gave away a hundred oak trees at our uh, centennial. Uh, and I just am wondering if we've followed up with where some of those little baby trees went. And just, you know, at some point, we're going to see this profusion of a hundred oak trees just kind of come to, into adulthood, and we're just sort of going to go, this is great.
We're going to include something in an upcoming Atherton, and I think you and I talked about it a little bit ago, to uh, ask them, hey, if you want a tree, snap us a photo, let us know how it's doing, and we'll put it on the town's social media and.
Yeah.
Publicize it.
Kind of um, pay attention to those babies. That's so great. Okay, thank you all. Um.
The mayor wants to say something.
Oh, sure, sorry.
I just wanted to ask if Sally is in the room, because I believe they're doing something on Earth Day to honor Arbor Day, so it'd be nice to announce what it is they're doing.
She's not here.
Oh, okay.
I could comment on that very briefly.
Thank you.
Yep, sure. So they have scheduled a tree walk, and that'll start at around eleven-thirty, which will be announced during the event. And there are also two hundred trees that'll be um, given away at the event. Small, small trees.
Two hundred, whoa.
And so Sally actually has some pictures of those that we'll include in the next departmental.
How big, how big are the?
They're, they're small. Um, probably, I don't know, less than twelve to fifteen inches or so.
Like a gallon size?
Yeah.
Yeah. Or no, like a port size. Okay, well, this is great.
Oh, and they are, they are planting, I think, eleven trees throughout the park also.
Oh, very good. Well, we are, we're going to be treed up. Thank you.
Not going to be any room to walk.
All right. So now's the time for public comments, and um, public comments can be emailed directly to council@ci.Atherton.ca.us, or if there's any member of the public uh, would like to give public comments, come forward at this time. I do want to remind everyone that this portion of the meeting is reserved for person, persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council, and state law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the city council under specified circumstances. The speaker's time is limited to three minutes, and additionally, the public may address the council on any subject listed on the consent and regular agenda, and there will be no discussion by council in response to any public comments.
Yes, ma'am. Ken Frederick Lindenwood. I'm only here to make a comment about the discussion at the last meeting about the future budget. Where we, the question was, was there enough money in the budget for things like the Environmental Programs Committee, et cetera? Having done some work afterwards and being educated, which I was not before, clearly, we can't and will not make a proposal for money without a very detailed proposal listing what, what the cost will be for what activities, what the pay feedback will be. So that we're not saying we're asking for any money for any of these committees, but we'll probably come back in the June timeframe with some sort of proposal. Just as a point of information. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Any other member of the public wish to make a public comment? And are they raising their hands? Rebecca Goldberg. Okay.
There's three chats. I don't know where they are though, because you can't get the chat.
Okay, she said.
Joseph, you have the platform to speak?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, you're on.
All right, I'm not, I'm not a Goldberg though.
Jo-, Joseph. That's how I see the name listed.
Okay, okay, so I can speak now? Okay, great.
Yes, sir.
All right. I'd like to make this statement that I don't condone any violence against anyone for the color of their skin, their faith, or nationality. I hope that every group can enjoy the right to live in a world free from violence. Every group has its strengths and weaknesses, and should be proud to be unique in their own way. Asians, Hispanics, blacks and whites, all have a culture, while different are equally valid. Pride in one's own race, and that does not imply contempt for other races, is also a normal and healthy sentiment. I want to talk about the rise in violence against white people. It's not as hidden as it once was. We're all seeing a spike in terror against people for the simple fact that they are white. I can't stay quiet any longer. Every day, I scroll through X and YouTube to see countless videos of whites being stabbed, shot, beaten. I read news articles describing sexual assaults against our women and children. I read about stabbings in the subways. I see videos of innocent whites being murdered day after day, and it has to end. I want things to peace till it be settled. It's not just happening occasionally, it's happening every day in our country. Just think about how white people feel, seeing our people being abused, but we're called Nazis for demanding it to end. I'll take the label of Nazi if it means I love my people enough to stand against the genocide being perpetrated against us. For years, we've stayed quiet, letting the blood of our people be spilled without any opposition, but it must end now. We need an organization for whites to unite under.
Mr. Joseph, this needs to relate back to the jurisdiction of the town of Atherton. So unless you can relate it back specifically to the town of Atherton, then this is a limited public forum, and you are not permitted to use this for any other forum unless it relates specifically back to city business. You're going to have permission to continue. If it does not relate back to city business, you are not going to be permitted to speak. Anthony, please unmute him if he does not speak.
Yeah, so I was, I was trying to get to my point. I'm asking for the city to pass a resolution, which the city can do, a resolution to take a stand against the rise in hate. And I was trying to get to my point by describing why I want that resolution to be passed. So I believe that that does pertain to city business, because the city itself, it has the ability to come out and make a statement condemning the rise in hate. They have the ability to pass statements saying they support Palestine or Israel. So I'm just taking my time to, to say that, you know, white people I feel are under attack. You can go to GTVflyers.com and watch Defiant Ben Devon Stack and Europa the Last Battle at GTVflyers.com, and it kind of tells you why and how white people are being attacked. Because diversity means fewer white people, inclusion means excluding white people.
Thank you so much. Your time has expired. Thank you so much.
Well, he has, he has one minute left.
Oh, he has one minute. Oh, that was a two-minute warning. So sorry to have interrupted you. Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, okay. I finish up my, my speech here about the, the call for a resolution. Is it privileged for our children to be groomed? Is it privileged for us to be murdered in our own homes? Is it privileged to foot the bill to import those that hate our very existence? We talk about progress in our country, but is it progress to let two mentally ill men get married or for a woman to kill her unborn baby? Is it progress for a white woman to?
I don't think that that's.
No, that's, that's not what we're talking about. So I'm going to um, ask that uh, we move on. Um, thank you very much.
Now, there are three other people making comments, and I mentioned the.
Vice Mayor Lewis, before you, before you proceed, I'm going to remind um, our members of the public, this is a city council meeting. This is a limited public forum. Public comments right now are limited to subject matters that relate to city business. These are council members that have jurisdiction over matters that concern the town of Atherton. We are not talking about world matters. We are not talking about national matters. We are talking about city jurisdiction matters. So if you wish to speak on something that concerns the town of Atherton, or something that is within the control of city council members, now is your opportunity to do so. We also will not condone, and this is on our city's policies and procedures, foul language, slander, abusive language. So with that, um, Anthony, can you please have the next speaker unmute himself?
Rebecca, you have the floor.
Hi, hi, City Council. Um, my name's Rebecca Goldberg, and I was hoping to speak on um, Sexual Assault Awareness Month. I don't know if you guys were aware of this, but um, April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and we're bringing awareness to injustices that many people face, and I think this is important for the city to hear. Um, I myself was actually a victim of sexual violence. Back in twenty twenty, I was attending a BLM rally. I was protesting the death of Saint George Floyd, and I think that, that people are not educated enough on how to recognize what sexual assault is. I was groped up my skirt, and it was very, very uncomforting. I was trying to, to call out. No one would listen to me. And I, I think that it's great that we have forums like this where I can discuss some of the grave injustices that are going on in our society. I mean, I was in that crowd, and I was screaming for help, but no one would listen. No one would listen. Everyone was too pent up over their anger towards the police, and I understand, I, I can sympathize with that, but I think it's important that we give recognition to those that have been gravely injustice by the system at hand. Um, I, I, I also want to, to bring up the point that there is, you know, we, we've legalized some sorts of sexual violence. Um, I don't know if you're familiar with a certain practice um, named Matiza Bape. I don't know if you're aware of this. It's, you can look it up on NYC.gov, but it's um, it's, they call it direct.
Excuse me, Rebecca, I'm going to, I'm going to ask, Rebecca, this is Vice Mayor Lewis, and I think I'm going to um, uh, interrupt you for just one minute. I have our mayor who would like to say something. Did you want to say something, Diana?
I, I just was going to suggest that uh, perhaps we, do we have the ability to make the calls short, the comments shorter than three minutes? Can we set the amount of time that's allowed?
Only three minutes.
Yeah.
Only there three minutes, Diana.
We've already indicated that in our meeting. The thing is, though, um, this portion, as the uh, city attorney has uh, said, is reserved for persons wishing to address the city council on uh, this, that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. And you're uh, prohibited um, from uh, acting on items not listed on the agenda except, except by special action of the city council. Now, if we were going to take up that topic uh, that you raised, Rebecca, uh, we would definitely welcome your, your thoughts on that, but that is not within our jurisdiction and our purview at this time. So I'm going to ask that you um, you uh, sorry, sorry.
You can move to the next speaker.
We could move to the next speaker then.
I have two others. Uh, Annalise. You have the floor.
Annalise, let me just uh, caution you. Hello, Annalise. Thank you for wanting to um, speak at our city council meeting tonight. I just want to remind you that uh, we will only allow public comment uh, in this section that has to do with the town of Atherton specifically, and the town of Atherton's purview. Uh, nothing that is global or uh, worldwide in, in, in nature, and not something that is not on our uh, regular agenda uh, focus. So if you have something to, to say that has uh, to do with the uh, town of Atherton and its business and its uh, um, um, business, uh, I would welcome to hear that.
You have the floor.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
We have a very bad connection. Maybe you could call back if you want. So let's go on to the next uh, public speaker.
Anthony, is there somebody else?
And I think that that's.
Mor-, Mordecai.
Oh, oh, Oy Gavelt. Uh, good evening, Council. Mordecai Felsbaum, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to caution you, Mordecai, that um, if you have something to say that is not related to Atherton, to the town of Atherton, uh, or to its uh, business in the town of Atherton, I will ask that you uh, refrain from speaking. But if you have something that you want to express on that, uh, that has to do with our town or other business that we uh, are about in our town, otherwise, I'm going to ask that you uh, not speak.
Give me a second.
Does he have anything to say, Anthony?
Have to give him a chance to unmute again.
Yeah. Oy Gavelt, I missed the unmute button there. Excuse me. Listen, um, it's a little anti-Semitic to hide behind subject matter jurisdiction.
Yes, I'm sorry. We're not talking about that in our town at this point. If we had that as a uh, future agenda item or a, a, a working uh, group on that, then you would be welcome. And my city manager has something to say.
And Madam Mayor, we have, we do have to be careful. We can't just simply cut them off without giving them an opportunity to come back with subject matter reference.
Yes.
After that point, then yes.
And so you, if you have something to say that is related to our town and uh, uh, the town business, I welcome that.
So I'll give them an opportunity again. Mordecai. Mordecai.
Ask him if he's got something to say.
Well, we're waiting for him.
You have to give him a chance. You have the floor.
Can you hear me now, Council?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Boy, you people love to hear yourself talk, don't you? I mean, don't you think it's a little anti-Jew to keep cutting off?
He's off. Cut him off. And then you asked Rebecca to call back. I think she did.
I think Annalise. No, Rebecca has her hand.
I think we're done with the.
I, I would, I, I would like to allow Ms. Frankfort to allow her comment. Let's, let's give people an opportunity to speak. I'm just going to, to say, let's allow them an opportunity to make a point that's relevant to the town of Atherton. Um, they could have possibly something that has to do with an issue and want to bring it back to um, Atherton. So I, I do want to give them an opportunity to do that. So before we cut, cut anyone off, let's give them the opportunity to do that. So Ms. Frankfort, please unmute yourself.
You have the floor.
Hi, um, is this any better this time?
That's better, yes, because you were cutting in and out. We, we had a very bad connection earlier.
Phenomenal. Thank you, ma'am. Um, I wanted to talk today about the fact, I mean, this is um, Child Abuse Prevention Month. I work with a nonprofit called the AWG. Um, first, though, watching what just transpired, I would like to warn you guys. Um, when you cut off free speech, your municipal bonds are actually at risk. There's been a lot of city councils, in fact, who have been sued for cutting people off. Um, time and time again, Supreme Court justices have ruled in favor of free speech. In fact, it has been ruled there's no such thing as even hate speech. I mean, to go as far as that, that there's no such thing. So I understand that they're not on topic, and I understand if they're um, inciting violence, but anything below that, you actually legally are not allowed to cut them off. Um, just, just to make sure you guys are as safe as possible, because they can sue you for your bonds and sue the city for not allowing free speech, which the Constitution does give us the right to. Um, but I wanted to talk today about protecting our children, um, especially in this month. I, I know it. I, I know where I work, I'm a little biased to it. But this month really is a month that we really need to make it more of a forefront of our mind, or something that we really need to, to keep focus on, being Child Abuse Prevention Month. We need to watch out for signs. Our office is right outside of town, but there is a lot of children in our town that we see. And I find it very sad. And there, I mean, there are plans until it's too late, you know what I mean? I feel like we are allowing it to just transpire, and I find this really scary, especially when you have legal means that, I mean, legally, a rabbi can put his mouth on a baby's genitals, and that is completely legal. And our, our children are being hurt. I have several kids in, that come to me for counseling, who at eight days old, were circumcised, and then a mouth was put on them. Two little boys that I see on a weekly basis have herpes for the rest of their life. And this is a legal practice. And I just think that we should be the first city to really take a stand against this, to stand with our children. What are we doing? Those, those are our future, and we're allowing them to be hurt in the most disgusting of ways. And it's, it's not that it's just a religious thing and a religious right.
Yeah, you have 10 seconds.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much. I would just like you guys to stand with the children.
Thank you.
One minute left for each.
Okay, so Rebecca, I understand you have maybe one minute left after we talked with you earlier. Would you like to use that one minute to make a comment?
Yes, I would just like to say hail Hitler, gas the Jews, send the niggers back to Africa.
That, that we can't do then.
Okay, let me give me a moment to remove Rebecca.
Annalise?
Give me one second.
Our city clerk says you have one minute left.
Ms. Frankfort did use up all her time, so.
Oh, she used up all her time, okay.
Yes.
There's one other person that's recently joined.
Sheldon Unable. If we have another comment to that effect, Mr. Unable, that would be unfortunate. We will immediately be muting you, so hopefully we will not be getting a comment like that. Try to keep your comments relevant to town matters, please.
You have the floor.
Every single aspect of the.
Sorry, that was a slip of my hand.
Every single aspect of the Jewish town would is satanic.
Yep, he's gone. Were there any other comments?
The Annalise again, that's it.
All right, I'd close the public comments.
We're gonna close public comments at this time and move on to the rest of our agenda. Next item is the disclosure of any ex parte communications. City council members should disclose any communications they have had on the agenda items at this time. Any ex parte, anybody? Okay, then we're gonna go on to departmental written reports. In your packet is a section on departmental written reports. Are there any comments or things you, anyone wants to say about that? I think the staff works really hard to put that together, and I appreciate it very much. There's no closed session, our consent agenda items is next, are next, and it's items one through six. I understand that Mayor Hawkins Manuelian is going to recuse herself for item number four. So if I can, are there any questions or comments on items one through six from council members at this time? Seeing none, I'll open it up to the public. Any members of the public have any comments on the consent items one through six? Anyone online? I'll bring it back to council. Let's take items one, two, three, five, and six. May I get a motion to approve?
Some, some, a second.
So Councilmember DeGoya moved, and Councilmember Widmer seconded the, any discussion? All those in favor?
We need a roll.
And we have a roll, yeah, 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 okay.
Councilmember Holland?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGoya?
Yes.
Councilmember Widmer?
Yep.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Hawkins.
That did not include item four, correct?
Correct.
No, it did not.
Yes, that.
Right, okay, that motion passes, then we'll go back to item number four of the consent agenda. Any discussion on that? We already did said no. Can I get a motion to approve? Councilmember Widmer? Councilmember DeGoya, second. Any other discussion, all in favor, roll call, please.
Councilmember Holland?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGoya?
Yep.
Councilmember Widmer?
Yep.
And the Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, uh, yes, so item number four passed. So we'll go on to the regular agenda items. Item is number seven, we'll start with. It is the consideration of an appointment to the Transportation Bicycle Pedestrian Safety Committee. Rob, Anthony, are you going to take this?
Yes, I will just briefly note that the applicant, Susan submitted her application in late February. It took us a bit of time to bring it to council. We were hoping we'd get a few more applicants over that time. And I think she was referred to apply for the position by our dear friend and former council member, Robert Pleto. Her and I have spoken a few times about the role, and I believe she was planning to join online. She had a late work event, so she couldn't come in person, but I don't see her online. And, you know, otherwise her application, you know, has been completed, and she has a recommendation from Robert Pleto.
So that still leaves us one short on.
That's right, we, we are starting to recruit for our annual recruitment. We've already reached out to current committee members and see if they're interested in reapplying. And we'll be posting, you know, things across our different channels to recruit for those expiring terms.
Okay, any comments or questions from council members on this, Stacy?
Has she been informed of our special meeting that's happening next week?
Our special meeting related to housing, I haven't.
No, 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 this committee has a meeting next week that's a special meeting.
I don't know, I, I would leave that up to the liaisons, yeah.
I don't think so.
I, I just talked with the chief, and once she becomes appointed, we'd be sending her the information.
Okay.
I just looked at my email, she emailed me that she had a patient with an emergency tonight, so that's why she didn't join online.
I didn't, I didn't get the agenda yet, so hopefully I'll get that.
The transportation agenda?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions or comments from council?
Well, I thought that the, I have no problem approving the applicant. I would hope that in the future we get a little more detail about why the person wants to be on and things like that, than just one sentence here and one sentence there, that's all. I mean, I, we can't control that, but if there were other applicants that were a little bit more complete, I would have voted for them instead of this one, because it's very unfulfilling looking at the application personally.
Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, I, I agree with that comment. And Anthony, can you at all elaborate on your interaction with her? Did she give you more information? Because there's not much information.
I didn't get a whole lot of information from her directly. I, I talked to Mr. Pleto, and I had one conversation with her on the phone. And, and Mr. Pleto, again, he said that she's interested, she wants to serve, and she was interested in this committee in particular, so there could be some, some benefit there.
The, the council is under no obligation to that point, any candidates? You could just request that maybe she come to the next study session of the council, and you can talk to her, talk to her directly.
I mean, this.
Well, yeah, I know.
This committee has had forum issues, we haven't had a meeting all year.
Yeah.
So she's willing to do it, and on Bob's recommendation, that feels like, I mean.
But she's not coming to the next meeting.
That's, I'm like, I'm wondering if she could, will come to meetings, so we could have.
She might, if, you know, be approver.
Yeah.
This seat has been vacant for a year.
Yeah, I mean, like, we don't have them.
It'd just been nice if she showed up.
Mayor Hawkins, do you have?
Make the comment that there are seven members on this committee, because we merged two committees together.
Right.
And when we come to our annual renewal, it would be wise to reduce the size of this committee to five, or.
Right.
Being a process to reduce it.
Do a natural attrition.
Yeah, and that's what we talked about when we did that. So, okay, how many years is this term that she's applying for?
It goes till 26.
Three years.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All right, any discussion, any public comments? Okay, all in favor? Roll call.
Can't do that, roll call.
Roll call.
Councilmember Holland?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGoya?
Yes.
Councilmember Widmer?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Hawkins?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is item number eight. Consideration of next steps for the train station renovation and history museum. The recommendation is that the council review and consider recommendations from the Train Station Renovation Ad Hoc Subcommittee regarding next steps for the train station museum, and if appropriate, authorize a budget amendment in the amount of $50,000 in support of next steps. So, George, do you want to?
Yes.
Take this?
Yes, so I'll start, and then the committee can jump in after that. The Ad Hoc Subcommittee conducted some research and analysis into various options for the interior of the station museum. That research and analysis included visiting some historic trains museums, speaking to train aficionados, and reaching out to various train model groups. Attached as part of the staff report is the train station display proposal prepared by the Ad Hoc Subcommittee for discussion by the council. The Subcommittee is recommending that the council consider an initial financial outlay of $50,000 to allow for staff and the Subcommittee to begin renovation of the display areas within the museum. It is expected that that $50,000 would cover the entirety of what's anticipated, to include the creation of content, purchase of materials and supplies, purchase of models, and display of, a development of display diorama. The preliminary proposal is for five separate display eras within the centerline display cabinets within the museum. Those errors are listed in the attachment. Each period would include visual displays, models, and possibly a QR code that would connect visitors to a connected audio file. At the end of the museum, there would be a video display that would feature the town's tracks of change historic video. And at the opposite end along the interior of the museum would be 2D displays with other information related to train history. In addition to allocating funds to begin the work, Subcommittee would like the council's feedback on five separate policy areas. One is, the entirety of the budget for the train museum, as you know, was exhausted in its renovations. So if the council wishes to pursue further outfitting of the museum, the council must address funding, and that's where the $50,000 comes in. Number two, much of the model work would need to be commissioned or built by volunteers, and how does the council wish to proceed with that? Number three, the council could also seek to form a nonprofit to manage the museum as well as its memorabilia. This could be done now or later. Or the town could also partner with the library, and maybe even use the San Mateo County Library as an education resource, and use library funds for any future costs. The town could also seek out other potential grants from other sources. And then five, what consideration should there be for operation? The assumption is that the museum would be left unattended and self-guided. What budget should be attached to any future general maintenance? That concludes the staff side of the report, and the Subcommittee here is present to answer any questions the council might have.
Okay, thank you very much. So any discussion from any member of the council?
Questions or discussion?
Okay, questions, yeah, let's do that first. Do you have any questions? No, okay, I'll open it up to the public. Any member of the public wish to speak on this matter? Of course, come on up, Ken.
Besides, I think I should get a word for the least offensive public comment earlier. On this, my question is, I'm confused. How much, how much money is being spent on this entire project? How much has come from other sources? How much is being spent? I'm totally lost on that, I think everyone is.
Well, yeah.
Knowing that?
No, yeah, we do, actually. But it was.
How much has come from other sources that's not our money? And how much we as, as a town pay?
I think ultimately, it's always, it's all, it all comes back to our money.
That's essentially right, it's all our money. The, the town, and just, yeah, through the, through the chair a few minutes. The town did receive $400,000 in partnership with Caltrain for the renovation cost. That cost per renovation did run over by about $30,000 or so, roughly. And it's almost complete now. So the $50,000, though, we're looking at general funds for, and then anything over that $400,000 was town money.
Sure. Diana?
Yeah, I wanted to add to that, that why it went over so much. When they started doing the renovation to the building, they, they found that it was in worse shape than we thought. And the building is a historic building, so it had to be rebuilt using, you know, with respecting that, I don't know how you describe that, but it had to be done like a historic building, so that's why the price was much higher than we anticipated.
Understand, these things are precious to retain our history and to restore our history and go forward. And I think that what we're doing with the train station in not tearing it down, number one, but to renovate it and create something that is more accessible to the public and for the public is really, it's, it, it's worth doing. Of course, we're gonna try not to spend as much money as we can, but like Robert said, it just, you know, the, the renovations, the building was, and Diana said, the building was in much worse condition. Did you want to say something else, Diana?
I did, I, I wanted to also point out that we do have residents who have stepped forward to donate items to this, so that those are things we don't have to spend money for. We have a daylight that's donated by the Luger family, and we have a second, a second, at least one other one that's possibly gonna be donated. And that the Museum of Sacramento, where I am right now, has said that they will, on permanent loan, stuff out of their collection that's in storage. So I'm gonna try to meet with them to find out what they actually have that we can use. So there, there are sources of things that don't cost us money, things that people are willing to donate. And there might be outside sources of funding for this as well, from the various train museums. We just haven't explored that yet.
Thank you.
Okay, I got a comment?
Okay, go ahead, Bill.
You know, in the report, it says we're hoping that the council will consider this initial, initial financial capital outlay. You know, this is like buying a boat. You know, you buy the boat, then there are dock fees, then there's maintenance, you know, you're just throwing money into the ocean. I, I, I would like to say, and if, if this was a business, and I realize it's not a business, but we have several people on the committee that have been in business. And you would say, in your business, think about what you're gonna do, go do your investigation, then come back and ask us for the money. We're asking for $50,000, which I think is substantial, and then we don't know where it's gonna go, because there's a lot of other questions. And so.
Excuse me.
I just feel, I just feel that when I see something that says we're asking the council to consider an initial financial outlay so that the finance committee can begin the, you know, the renovations, and then start looking into what other things they need to buy, and where they can get something for free. My feeling is, do that first.
I, this is a booklet, I wanted to do that, Bill, and I was told that this is a public bid process, so that I was not allowed to reach out to the vendors who might later than bid to build the things. So in the real world, yes, you would go and you'd talk to people and get prices. I was prohibited to do that. So what I was able to do is I did meet with the local train model people to try to get their guestimates. So this is, you're correct, this is based on guestimates, because we're not allowed to reach out directly, and it's. it's frustrating, but that's the way government works, I guess.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, in the sta- oh, Rick, yes. Go ahead.
Yeah. I mean, the language in the staff report does say initial, but in the proposal, it's for fifty thousand dollars. It, it's not unclear where it's gonna go, it's quite clear exactly where it's gonna go. It's gonna go to build three display cases at the northern end, and to hire someone to put the content in those, and specifically, what would go in those is proposed.
Okay.
It would go to, uh, buy, if we nee- if we can't get donated, the trains. Uh, that we, we would have five trains, we already have one, and we, uh, may have another or two from the train museum where Diana is, but it, tho- th- these are not terribly expensive. And it would do the other content design, so if we can, we would get people to build models of the train station in each of those five periods that we've suggested on the Center Island. But if we can't get that done within budget, we'll just use photos of those train stations. And, and that's what's in this report. And those photos, we already have with the Heritage Association, so I don't think that's terribly costly, it just requires someone to put the content together. Fifty thousand dollars isn't a lot to do the content for this kind of a granted, very small little train museum. Uh, but I, I think that if, i- if, in fact, we find out that there's people that are willing to build models of the station and they're going to charge us, and there's a cost that would exceed this, which if they were going to charge us to build models of the station, and we wanted to go that route, then that would come back. That's the only thing that initial relates to.
Mm-hmm. So, if I, Stacy, do you want to make a comment on this?
You can go ahead.
Okay, so, the, the way I read the staff report is the fifty thousand is for, uh, as, uh, Councilmember DeGoy was saying, uh, i- is laid out in that very bottom paragraph and then on to the second page. I, I just, uh, um, I just wanna say that when I speak with people, uh, in, in the public, and they, they say, so what's happening to, you know, your old train station? Are you tearing it down? I said, no, the council is renovating it, rebuilding it, and, you know, to its original condition, and going to open it up as a train museum. They go, wow, that is so cool, that's really acknowledging the history of the train station, and, uh, you know, making it a public venue. So I think that the idea, the premise of, of the historic train station museum is, is really valid and really good, 'cause we don't have much of that here in Atherton. You know, we don't have museums or, you know, public, uh, parks with, uh, big statues from our, our heritage people, so uh, I'd really love to see this move forward. I think fifty thousand dollars at this junction is, will get us to the next level, that will create something that is more tangible. And, you know, I don't think that, um, it's beyond imagination to maybe do some public fundraising, and I feel that there are many people in the town who would like to donate either historic pieces or even money towards, uh, making it really good for our kids. That's all I have to say.
Stacy.
Stacy.
Um, I would say, I, I really loved the proposal that the subcommittee put together. I think it's a very interesting idea that you guys that all the displays and the concepts are really cool. So, I think, um, you guys did a really good job keeping track of all of the different areas and all the details that you wanna have in there, and I thought that was really, um, compelling. Um, I think, at this point, the train, you know, to use a pun, the train station has left the station. We have to bring, it's the end of the line, let's get it done, so I think, yes, so I think fifty thousand dollars to do is a lot of money, but we should do a good job. We've committed to doing this, and so we should be committing to doing a nice trains, a nice train museum, so I'm, I think we should go full steam ahead and get this done. I'm excited to see it.
Thank you. So, um, can I just open it up to public one more time to see if anybody wants to say anything on this? And then I'll bring it back, Bill. No? Anybody online? No? Oh, yes, John, come, I'm, just had a feeling you wanted to. Absolutely, come forward.
We have an opportunity to look at the plans, Diane shared them with me. And I agree with Stacy, I think the display is kinda cool. But had any concern, it, it's the possibility that it could get kinda cluttered with all this stuff, and I think we have to watch out for that.
Hmm.
The other comment I had was could there be a sort of a dynamic aspect to it? I mean, if it's the same exhibit put in place and then left there for twenty-five years, I don't think you get a lot of repeat visits to something like this, if it's just the same thing time after time, I mean,
Mm-hmm.
you know, the the Anderson Museum changes their hangings once in a while. Whether something could be done to sort of update it with information about progress of trains in California or something. I think that would add to the attractiveness, but that may be premature at this point.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Widmer?
Yeah, so, okay, here's my supposed compromise on this. Normally, when we do a project, we say, this is the cost that we estimate, plus a ten or fifteen or even twenty percent additional. So I'm willing to do fifty thousand with an additional contingent of, say, ten thousand. And if you hit that limit, you gotta get either volunteers, or as Rick said, putting pictures up or something like that. Other than that, if it's just gonna be an open number, then I, I'm not gonna support it. I agree that people wanna see it, I get questioned on it too, when are we gonna open it up, but come on, you know, it can't be, you know, a black hole for money, and I don't want it to become that, so, uh, we do everything else this way with a contingent. And then after that, we make do, and I thought Rick had an excellent idea, well, if we have to substitute pictures and write-ups instead of buying trains and stuff like that, then that's fine. So I'd like to propose we add a contingent to it, it could be as much as ten thousand dollars if council agrees, but that's it, there's no more initial. That's, uh, that's my two cents. Else, I'm not gonna vote for it.
Okay, fine. Um, yes, Stacy. Diana, oh, okay, yeah. You were raising your hand.
I'm just a-
You're just condoning me.
Yeah.
Diana?
Oh, I was gonna say, I wanted to comment back on what John was talking about. In terms of, and this is also something I'd like feedback on the council, which is, one of the things we can do to make the thing have more life is to make relationships with other groups, and one of the ideas that you saw in the staff report was trying to reach out to the library to make a ongoing relationship with them, where they could come in and offer programs on early Indians, they could, you know, so they can use the space to teach classes, uh, do displays, all sorts of things. We also can reach out if there's interest to, to make a resident group. Some of the other small museums like this have residence groups, so they have an annual event where people dress in costume, and they have a fundraiser. So, uh, at the time that we had the centennial, I had that, I, I was manning the train station, uh, broom, and we had a sign-up for people who were interested, and we collected a number of names of people who were interested to volunteer and be involved. So based on what we say today, if you guys are interested and think that's a good idea, we can also reach out and see if there's an interest of the community to get involved in some way. What, that was like, I don't-
So, I just think, I think we have to take this one, one step at a time. I mean, obviously, I, I think that how, the, all that you said, Diana, is really good, and I think that will come, you know, a- as it evolves. And, uh, John's comments about, uh, having it, uh, not be c- completely static, you know, cast in concrete, one size forever and ever. Uh, things like this, um, need to, uh, grow and change and, and it meet the community's needs. Um, but, uh, right now, I think we're at a stage that, uh, council needs to approve this what I think is a lot of money, but I think in the real world, it's kind of a necessary and modest budget to go to the next step. And I disagree with Councilmember Widmer that we put a, uh, a, 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 a percentage or increase on that amount um, at this time, because that, uh, locks it in as a percentage increase, uh, as an surety, instead of something that is what may be needed, maybe less or maybe more, or something entirely different. So I, I'm opposed to that concept. I think we need to just deal with the fifty thousand dollar request at this point and let them move on. So, any other comments? And I'm closing public comment and asking
Yeah, I'll make a comment.
Yes.
Um, I think that the, I, I, the idea of, um, uh, reaching out to Atherton residents and, and easy outreach through the blast email to see if anyone's interested in participating is a good thing. Um, I think that if, I, I think, uh, coordinating with the library and maybe the library doing some programming around the space is a great thing. Uh, I think that I, I think that if there are, is some kind of an ongoing, an organization that ends up getting created, which I find unlikely, but if it's po- if it does, it should not involve staff time managing that.
Right.
Mm-hmm. So, um,
Okay. All right.
I mean, I'd make a motion that we, uh, move forward as recommended in the proposal, approve fifty thousand dollars with a ten thousand dollar contingency. And, uh, uh, this city ma-
Is that what, what's in the proposal with the ten thousand?
Fifty thousand dollars and Councilmember Widmer added the ten thousand dollar contingency, which makes sense. And, um, there's some things that can be done within George's budget on some of this, and I think we should move forward and get it, get this thing done.
So the, the fifty thousand, it, it's a contingency of a, a additional ten thousand, but if that's, um-
The staff is within the budget that we're approving.
Okay.
I think, uh, where you may have been heading, Madam Vice Mayor, is if, if it is more than sixty,
Yeah.
it's still gotta come back for council, but I think Councilmember Widmer was looking for a
I know, s-
Yeah.
Oh, that's it, that's it, that's no more.
They talk about going out to other agencies, talking to the library, there's lots of ways, and uh, and Councilmember DeGoy also said, you know, maybe we have to put pictures up and write-ups as opposed to have many trains. I think that the sixty K is right, and if you wanna come back later, like, after you really document everything, fine, maybe I won't be on the council then.
Okay. All right. I'll second the motion. Any objection, any conversation?
Took a turn in the comment.
And we will have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Holland?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGoy?
Yes.
Councilmember Widmer?
Yeah, I agree with this one.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Okay, so, uh, any council reports and comments?
Thank you for your report.
I have a report from CKEG, yes.
I have a question on your report.
Well, we can take that offline, um, because we don't wanna talk, it's very dense, just in a nutshell, MTC, Metropolitan Transportation Commission, is t- trying, uh, to, uh, create a consolidation of all of the, uh, San Francisco Bay Area Transit Agencies, uh, which would include soup to nuts, and, uh, raise a billion dollars, of which they wanna take seven hundred and fifty million of that uh, for their transportation programs, leaving all the other transportation, uh, needs of the town, uh, of the jurisdictions like bike lanes or maintenance of roads and this and that, you know, like two hundred and fifty million, I mean, and it's so, CKEG has, uh, responded to their recommendation. I mean, the general sense of CKEG members was that this is not gonna fly the way they are proposing. Not to consolidate, but maybe to coordinate. Isn't that the word I used in that thing? Anyway, so that's kind of the essence of the, um, the report that I made. Any future agenda items that anybody wants to bring up?
Report out on.
Yes, oh, you have a report?
Yeah, so I attended the SFO Roundtable.
Uh-huh.
Um, and there were two things. One, that was very interesting, we got a presentation on advanced air mobility, which is the new airplanes and drones and you know, the vertical takeoff airplanes and stuff like that, that, and they, their expert has offered to come and give a presentation to any council that wants, if there's a deep interest on this council to learn more.
The flying cars?
Um, no, it's, yeah, kind of. It's more like the helicopters and airplanes that can do vertical takeoff and have electric airplanes, and they're being reviewed by FAA now, so they could become
Well, we don't-
And they can, and they can transport at least four to six people.
Like probably balls be landing in Atherton, they showed us a map of like all the rules and the sound and whatever, but they will be flying over Atherton, so perhaps if you guys are interested, I've seen the presentation, it's very interesting, so if you guys want to learn more about it, let me know, and I can connect the expert to George.
They used to videotape that. I mean, is it all videotaped, so you can watch it online, I think?
Yeah, so maybe George can send the link out. And then the other big hot news on the SFO Roundtable front is that there's a big research study in Palo Alto and the area that perhaps all of the metrics that we're using to learn about and measure noise is incorrect.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So, there is a follow-up study coming, but it's it's big news on the Roundtable front, guys, so.
Okay.
I believe that Mayor has a comment as well.
Say what? Diana?
Yeah, I just wanted to report out that George and I were here in Sacramento, and we met with Josh Becker and Berman, and we talked to them about the idea of modifying how, uh, or looking at legislation that might change the way they count, uh, dormitories. We also talked to them about ERAF and the, uh, what's it called?
Vehicle license fee?
Vehicle license fees. And we also told them about Earth Day, and, uh, Josh said that he might be able to stop by toward the end. And that reminds me, this Sunday is Earth Day, and we hope all you guys are going to come and be in prime form for our leaf blowing competition, which should be a lot of fun. And, uh-
Tell us what you want to do, Diana. I've never seen an email from you saying, these are the things I'd like you to do. I guess that's coming.
It's coming, but it can't come for me, so, um-
Just be light on your feet, you know, come on. Pitch in.
Let me talk, all right, you know what, you're right, this is the perfect venue, so what, is it okay if I spin them in to tell you what the areas are and the volunteer opportunities?
Yeah.
Because now I can talk to everybody at once, and I'm not-
We've got two minutes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, exactly. So go quickly, because we were supposed to be done at seven.
Okay, there's a number of different areas, and we have volunteers. At the beginning of the day at nine, we need all hands that are available to lift stuff. I assume none of you guys wanna do that. We have an art exhibit where if you wanna help kids do things in the art exhibit, we have the libraries doing a whole area. We have, um, a teen center area where we have, uh, fast, a whole thing on fast fashion, so if you have any clothes that you would, uh, like to donate, uh, specifically high-end fashionable things that you don't want anymore, they will have a clothing swap. This is being put on by local teenagers.
Give them to me, no.
So you bring an item and you take an item, so if you bring a shirt, you get to pick a shirt off the table, so it's a clothing swap.
Sounds so bad.
We also have a large vendor fair. We have our own ADAP will be there, having five tables, and they could use some help with, uh, with meeting residents and showing them where they live on the map, where their assembly points are, and all of that. And, um, trying to think of what else.
The leaf blower competition.
Well, of course, the leaf and the mowers. We also, there was a, our competition, and we are, are gonna announce six youth, uh, getting awards for their artwork, they'll be on display. And, uh, we also have the, 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 uh, sheep versus the robot, which is very exciting, and we're gonna have to get those sheep off and into that field, so that's gonna be something to watch, to behold too.
So what time is the blowers?
The blowers is at, it's, we're gonna call people to the field at noon.
Okay, I'll see you at noon.
Ready, I'm gonna come warmed up, like, having practiced.
Do you want me to do anything you need to tell? Okay, I hear you got somebody else waiting. Okay, I hear you got somebody else to me.
Actually, Bill, in your case, the people at ADAPT had asked for you in particular because you have worked there before and know about it.
Okay, well, let me know what you want me to do, right?
Just show up, okay. Any other public people? I'm going to call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
In an hour.
Good night, Mona.
Good night, thank you. Mona, thank you for your help, but I mean, you know.
Yeah, you.